So this on this reviewing stuff. You're pretty buddy. As we were right. From the. That was going to start. Because you have. I'm in print, we are good way. Most police said. Seventy. Now the final that it's.
Jordan. I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt. I don't know if Nicole's having the same challenges I'm having, but I. I'm only hearing about half of what you're saying, and it seems like your microphone isn't working.
Yeah, I think it might be easier on your end, but on our end, I think, Jordan, if you unmuted. Your computer. While you're on it or while you're speaking, I'm not sure if that's possible for what's going on over there, but.
What happens if I unmute? I can hear you if there's an echo, but I, but at least I can hear you.
Yeah, it's much better.
How about now?
Yeah, that's.
Great.
But now you're muted again. Sorry.
Thank you back there.
Hi all, I have moved closer to the microphone to hopefully help us here as well as those on Zoom. Mayor and Councilor Greider, how's this?
Much improved.
All right, perfect. Um, okay, perfect. Well, we're gonna go through our study session on the approved budget. As a reminder, the next round is the doc budget, which is the fine. So we're reviewing say is your approved budget and discussing potential changes that council may wanna make. And those changes is made. Go ahead, Tessa. Moving forward. Uh, any actual changes will occur in meeting tonight, our regular council meeting via motion. Today's study session is just for discussion. Go ahead and go forward. One more. Thank you. Um, okay, let's jump in. So the approved budget had one minor change from proposed budget. And that is budget may decide to transfer twenty-five thousand dollars to our street fund. Into the um rap. Billboard improvement project, our capital fund. Um, that was a minor change they proposed budget and the results were tested. If you want to go. The next slide. That is with a final budget of eighteen million ninety-two thousand and forty-six dollars. Once again, what's highlighted on the screen behind you. Um, is where those changes occurred. It was in our inter-fund transfers, transferring from the street fund to the C I P funds. Um, as a part of our budgeting process, there's an opportunity for committees and commissions to make budget requests for any planned events for the coming year. So part of today's discussion will be about those requests coming commissions and committees. Um, go ahead, Tessa. Oh, sorry. Yes, since I'm not coming on, I forget where I am. Just to show you, we do have a balanced budget, which is the requirement for the state to make sure our revenues equal our expenses. Right now, we can charge your head. So right now in the approved budget, we have twenty-five thousand dollars allocated to council discretionary. Um, I have met with almost every single commission and gone through a budget request and process without. To figure out if they would like to request any of those council discretionary funds for projects during the year. So if we go ahead and go to the next slide. These are requests that came up. Um, public arts committee. Uh, would like to host four city hall art openings. For artists. He creates two beauty events and embroiling painting projects. And they figured that the total budget request needed, um, and the detail for the staff report, how they came up with this is three thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. And I'm getting sponsorship and other donations to help make things happen. Um, urban forestry is requesting four hundred dollars for a community engagement event, their urban forestry master plan. Um, as well as their urban day tree store event that happens every year. Together for talent would like to post a recycling roundup. On May five hundred dollars. To make that happen, in addition to donations from ecology. Planning Commission, uh, many of the planning projects are already incorporated in our actual budget. Um, I am putting a request in for seven hundred and fifty dollars for potential training for those commissioners. My request is to clarify it's coming from me. Uh, though a couple went to training last year, that was very helpful. Park and track, uh, we had not finished our budgeting process together. Um, so that request will come at a later date for you all. And as a reminder, the economics commission has not yet stood up, or the traffic, safety and transportation commission. Um, my soft recommendation would be to allocate five hundred dollars to every commission. As a minimum right now, um, as a way to make sure they have some things available for training, advertising, fire. Um, do you all prefer to just discuss these requests when we go ahead and give some additional recommendations for changes to the approved budget first? How are we feeling? That sounds great. Um, Mayor, I'm gonna turn it back to you for leading discussion.
Thank you, Jordan. So I am able to see. The J S I, uh, are there any questions or comments at this time? You can raise your hands so I can recognize you. Counselors buyers, is that, uh, do you have your hand up?
It's too bad who knows.
I'm sorry, I'm not really able to hear. Can you speak into your microphone?
Well, go ahead and repeat what Commissioner Butler shared. The thing is, this is the hybrid equipment for our smaller committee commission meetings. We do have a bigger one coming for city council. Um, Councilor Fire makes the recommendation that for all of the commissions that have requested less than five hundred. That they get allocated a minimum of five hundred per commission.
Are there any other comments or questions, uh, councillor, excuse me, Perry Miller, is that your hand?
My question is, would we commission these annuals? Yes.
Uh, what councillor Perry Miller just clarified is that it's five hundred dollars per commission and committee.
Um, I have a question as well. Um. I, um, I fully, fully support training for. All of our committees and commissions. Um, and I appreciate that, uh, that, that, that this is getting budgeted in. I, can I get? A better understanding of why it is actually part of discretionary funding rather than just a budget item?
Um, the way that our budget is structured is that each kind of committee has their own line item within our budget. Um, the training lines that we have is specific to staff.
I'm not sure I, I understood that explanation, so, um. Uh, I, I guess I'm just trying to find out why, why is it specifically coming out of council discretionary funds?
Yeah, this was the process that we adopted last year where we put a, you know, larger chunk of money in council discretionary. And then through that budgeting process, take some of the discretionary and be allocated to other. To the committees and commissions. If council vote chooses, we can put that seven hundred and fifty dollars into the general fund in a different budget category. Um, if that is the preference of council.
I, I, I'm not sure that I am terribly concerned about it. I'm just more curious than anything else. I do. I mean, we've had the, um, process of using discretionary, using the council discretionary funds to fund. Um, committee and commission special projects for years. I just don't recall. Um, any training dollars being a part of that, uh, or development dollars being a part of that. So. Yeah, go ahead.
The reason I'm asking for training specific to the planning commission, because it's a specialized training that would be outside of the cities. Well, you'll provide in-house, whereas the training for all other commissions committees can be provided by our city attorney as a good source. Uh, so it is in some ways a special project specific to planning commissioners. Uh. But I will also go ahead and pull up our budget document just to show you the structure of how we. Do our general ledger line items for our budget throughout the year.
Well, honestly, Jordan, um, I. I, I, I'm pretty satisfied with that answer, um, at this point, and. It really is only seven hundred and fifty dollars. Um. And. I don't think it, it, it's enough to take up any more time in the conversation. I just, uh, it just was a curiosity for me.
Thanks.
So I have a general question. Mayor.
Uh, councillor Penamriff?
Thank you. Um, so, you know, twenty-five thousand dollars for over the course of the year, you know, might not be announced if there's. Their projects that that we might want to do. In that case, we could, there was something we wanted to do, we need to transfer. Something out of contingency in the general one, is that do?
I was correct. Yes, I'm gonna try a little test out. If you guys don't mind getting cozier and coming closer to me, that might help with our audio. Is your cam, is the camera on too?
Yes.
The camera? We decided to get cozier to try to help with the audio. Um, what councillor Penomar just brought up was that. You know, if the city council decides that down the line, they find a project where they need more than twenty-five thousand or more than what's available in council discretionary. A transfer from contingency could be done. To help that.
Yeah, I, um, I. If that's, if that's part of the question that I was asking earlier, I, I definitely appreciate that we can do that. Um. Right, I mean, we've had planning train, planning training in the past. A, I think seven hundred and fifty dollars might. I mean, I hope that's enough and. And B, I, I just don't ever recall it coming out of contingency fund as part of the development of. You know, our, our land use abilities, um, in the city. But again, it's such a small amount, I really. If, if I, I, I just wanna add that in conjunction with what. Councillor Penomriff just said.
Great. So Mayor, I have got a recommendation. Um, for council to consider giving five hundred dollars to each commission and committee that has requested less than five hundred. And then for those commissions and committees that have requested more to have that amount allocated to them. Um, as a potential change to the approved budget.
Okay.
Great, then I'm gonna shift to the next slide. Um, another recommendation that I'd like to make to council to change in this approved budget is the inclusion of two grants. That we were unaware that the city was receiving at the time the proposed and approved budget being discussed. Uh, um, those two is one, a construction grant for our solar panels project at the community center and police buildings. We will be discussing at council tonight. Want to move forward with that. And the second one is a wildfire production program out of the Oregon Fire Marshall's, um, office. Where we receive a hundred and eighty-six thousand eight hundred dollars to help with hazard fuel removal in the Bear Creek area, as well as the purchase of large-scale equipment. To help us maintain that area, um, for years to come. Um, and so my recommendation to council would be adding these two grants as both revenue as well as expense. Um, since we expect to expend the money in this coming year.
And I just wanna clarify, Jordan, did you, um, when you say, when you say, um, you didn't know we had the grant money, you just. Uh, are you saying that you were, uh, had not gotten the approval that we were awarded the grants at the time of budget? Yeah, okay, correct. Jordan, I'm gonna let you go ahead and take, um, the questions. Yeah.
Well, that sounds good. We have one from councillor Penomra.
Yeah, well, just a question about the, um, the fire, the fuel production. Is that something that we can, uh, use just in Bear Creek or can we use that in the, right?
Yeah, because if you don't mind going back a slide. So that was specific just Bear Creek. We actually both Jackson County, Phoenix and Talent, we all applied for it together. And we're each awarded funds. So we will be going for our dog to project that work. There is a second hazardous fuel program available that will be applying for, for Wagner Creek. Unless an application that will submit this year.
Great, thank you.
Of course.
Jordan, could you, um, provide us with an example of the kind of equipment that you would purchase for ongoing maintenance?
Yes, and I will say every time I try to explain it, uh, I do it worse and worse jobs. Here we go. It's mostly a very large scale tractor that can have different attachments on it. We can mow very steep, for example, around our reservoirs or help chew up like larger diameter brush. To say a lot of trees have been growing up in an area with plenty of more open space for better fire access. That, but the attachments can chew through them, uh, very quickly as if it was a giant mower. Yeah, councillor bias has a question. Would this producer potential need to use? Would this producer need to use, and use our first time? But yes, I think we'll still wanna use herbicide in our. Station areas to get back to that native ecosystem, they're on very steep slopes and that have a lot of, uh. Growth. This is a piece of equipment that could be used in place of that. Yeah, and if we go to the next sign, Tessa, thank you.
Excellent.
Yeah, councillor Penomra has a question.
Yeah, I'm wondering, uh, the stories, the grants for the solar, uh, does that cover it or do we have to match?
That covers it. I'll go into detail. There is. The match for that project is actually community funding through the Oregon Clean Power Co-op model. Yeah. And so with that, I'd love to open up, uh. Any discussion that council members might wanna have about other potential changes to the budget or questions about the budget. At this time.
Jordan, go ahead.
I, I was gonna change the subject. Lately, so if Mayor, if you have a question regarding what I'm talking about, please go ahead.
No, go ahead, councillor Penomra.
Yeah, so as, as I was, um, reviewing and I, and I don't remember, they have gone over it already. Um, I was curious about. The, um, the S D C fund. And so that's all being kept. I'm just wondering, at what point do those get transferred into capital projects or whatever? Because it doesn't look like transferring anything else this year.
Yes, and that's a great. Question. So S D Cs are system development charges, and they're things that we apply to any new building that's occurring, whether residential or commercial. And the idea of those S D Cs is that they're pertaining into our infrastructure, so buying share of the capacity we have already built, as well as allowing us to increase capacity from higher demand. This and development charges are linked to capital improvement plans. And so what we need to do now that we have just adopted a new capital improvement plan this year, is we need to calculate what our S D C level should be. And only ask that calculation. And we. Then figure out how to fly it. For us to do a budget resolution, or at least the, any supplemental budget to be able to free up those dollars. Um. At this time, we didn't feel comfortable guessing what those amounts could be.
And if I could just follow up, I think you probably already explained that. That sounds familiar now. I just didn't remember when I was looking at the book. So yeah.
It's complicated. Yeah. Any additional questions? Mayor, did you have something that you were, had a question on?
Um, no. Oh, councillor Promra.
So this is just a general kind of amusing question, and I, I think it might be late in the game for this budget season. But I'm kind of thinking about our staffing and, um, how. Right now, um, you know, we want to get grants and there's money out there. And one of the things that I've learned more recently is how much work it is to manage grants. Um, you know, we have an incredible financial. See, oh, oh, what do we call it? The chief financial officer, and that's great. And I'm just wondering, would the city benefit? At this point, uh, shifting staffing in some way so that we were, or, um, you know, it had, uh, or a person power. To go out with grants.
Yeah, no, thank you, councillor. You know, for me, there's, there's a great flavors. Are very diverse. You know, and the amount of grant management that takes for, for example, FEMA dollars versus C B G dollars. Versus other state dollars versus private dollars is such a huge range. But I really prefer the flexibility of being able to hire an independent contractor to help manage depending on flavor. And so we have included in this year's budget, uh, contract. Personnel services, business consulting services to help that grant management. So I'm hoping it goes much smoother this year. The other really great news is that our rebuilding is naturally slowing down. So we've accomplished so much rebuilding. We're starting to free up staff tasks, get reorganized. Um, so our systems finance director this coming year will start really focusing on the grants portion. And our finance director has actually already started doing classes around grant writing, grant applications. Uh, so that we can bring all those skill sets back in house and keep doing good work.
I, I do remember I have a question, Jordan. Um, at a recent meeting, we talked about, um, there's a, there's a fairly new position that is, um, included in the staffing for this year's budget, and it's the outreach. I don't know the, I'm sorry, I can't think of the position title. Um, but we asked for a bullet point or outline of the essential duties of that position, and I don't know if I missed it, or, I mean, you, uh, I, I recall you were gonna prepare that and provide it. To us before the budget, and I don't know if I missed it or if, if that information is available.
Yeah, hi Mayor, and I apologize. I have not gotten that to you all, uh, quite yet. I apologize for that delay. That position is our community engagement director. And they're focused on our committee and commission support. As well as creating our communications so that we can actually engage for our community. Um, since this is one of our core goal areas is this community engagement piece. Um, having someone in that seat, I think this, uh. For me has been incredibly helpful to include our communication both in English and in Spanish. Um, but yes, I look forward to getting you guys that job description so you can know in detail what that role is.
And can, do you have an estimate, uh, an estimate of when you'll be providing us with that information?
Yes, I'm hoping to schedule a special study section, actually next Wednesday, for us to discuss, uh, structure and staffing and workload.
Oh, go, okay, good. Um, well, that sounds good. I, I, I mean, I appreciate. Um, I appreciate that you have, uh, this is a thoughtful, um, and, you know, this is a thoughtful job description and, or a job, a position that your team. Um. Is, uh, crafting to, to meet the needs of the, the goals. It's just. Um, I, I would, I hope that what we can do moving forward is as we add. Positions, um, to our F T Es, um, at, at, at minimum for the record to just provide us with. I, I don't know that, you know, a detailed job description is really what we need, but just kind of the essential duties of all, um, new positions so that we can. Demonstrate for our community when we're adding F T Es or, or, or changing F T Es out from one position to another, that we can, we can speak intelligently about what it is that we're. Purchasing for our community, if that makes sense, and, and why.
That does, Mayor, and thank you, and I'm a hundred percent on board with that. This is a bit of historical context. This position was created, uh, under Jamie McLeod Skinner. Back in the twenty-one, like two budget, um, and we had just continued it forward. That first year it was grant forward and we had grant funded, continued it. So I am happy to provide that, uh, detailed job description, as well as one of our goals is to update all job descriptions for city staff. So everyone can have a better idea of what their roles are. Uh, and we can save more on time, but sticking with the times.
I do wanna, um, clarify a little bit of that context. The role was actually, um. It, the, it was actually at, at the request of the council and, and it now looks, uh, it looks quite a bit different than. Purpose of it, and, and that's not, um, good. I mean, that, there's no value judgment there. It's just that it, it's very, very different, and that. That is one of the reasons why, I mean, if somebody were to ask me what the role is about, I don't feel comfortable that. Um, we can, um, we could describe it as well as we. We had originally envisioned it. Um, so, uh. And, and it's evolved and changed quite a bit. So, um, yeah, that's, that's just to add context. I, I do look forward to seeing, uh, what the. What the, uh, what the new duties are and how they. Um, will provide for, uh, our goals moving forward.
Yeah, wonderful. Uh, councillor Penoff has a question.
Yeah, I opened up the, the, um, the staff thing, uh, collecting questions to my. Um, the volunteer coordination, that's probably gonna be in the description that you're writing up. But I'm just wondering, is there software attached to that, or is that about challenging our committees and commissions?
You know, focus right now is that committee and commission support, since that's one of our stated goals. Well, one thing that we started last year is creating a database for volunteer finance. So that we could do things like when the cooling center happens, issue, you know, if you volunteers want to come volunteer for a shift, et cetera. So the goal is to develop, uh, some more sophistication around having a database to easily communicate with potential volunteers.
And that's just made in Vegas, not.
It's signupgenius.com.
I have another quick related.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
I might. We might switch to another department if you wanted to follow up on.
Yeah, mine's, I have a related question.
Please.
Um, well, it's a little unrelated, but it's related. Um, you mentioned that we're going to have, um, the study session next week. And I, I think this is a timely, I, 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 I'm glad that we're on this topic. Um. It. With some of the staff changes that we've seen recently, can, are, will we be anticipating some structural changes? And if so, um, I would ask the same thing in. Or structural changes, any potential upcoming structural changes, that if there are any new jobs or, um. Kind of new services that are gonna be provided to the, uh, to the community through, through any staffing changes, I'd love to get outlines. For those as well. I mean, in general, I'd love to see us just get in the habit of providing those outlines as we add, uh, or even subtract. Um, positions, but mostly, you know, when we're creating new duties.
Absolutely.
So the question is, are we gonna, do, do we anticipate seeing any, uh, new types of positions in the, in the next meeting, and if so, could we get outlines for those as well?
Yes, if there's gonna be any new proposed positions, I will provide outlines. Um. I would also just be discussing some other potential ways to help reduce workload and, uh, maintain the current, uh, budget that we have.
Okay, great, thank you.
Beyond just the creation.
All right, thanks a lot.
Yeah, and councillor Penomra has a question.
Yeah, um, so I see I T director on there, but I'm trying to remember, are we, do you, did your hires, are we pulling that as a position versus contracting out? They still get the text, you know, so I was just wondering where we're at.
Yeah, so we did, so last year's budget, we created the I T director position, um, wanting to bring I T services back in house. He was hired, Mike White was hired about four months ago. Maybe five months at this point, um, and he has officially been working with tech management for that transition. Our contract is done within June thirtieth. So we will be fully in-house again.
Oh, we'll get Mike.
Yeah, was, okay, yeah, yeah, great. Um, and it has been. A huge improvement in, in our daily lives, having Mike on staff.
Yeah.
Yeah. Great, and Mayor, if we have no further discussion of questions, um, folks are welcome to take some fresh air break in our six forty-five meeting as well.
Are there any other questions or comments? All right. Um, so if there's nothing else, I'm not seeing any hands going up. Um, it is hard for me to see, just so you know, from this angle. Um, I might ask, um, Hector to move the camera closer to, uh, Councilor Perry Miller, kind of just down the line, uh, where, down the shelf that it's sitting on, so, for the council meeting. Um, that looks better, uh, Hector, yeah, that looks better. Um, yeah, so if there's no other comments or questions, going once, going twice, all right, let's go ahead and adjourn this meeting at six oh eight. We'll see everybody at six forty-five.
Thanks, thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Jordan.